Alrighty, let's see we got, I think it gets. Close enough, let's pledge allegiance to the flag please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Happy New Year everyone.
Happy New Year.
Uh, this is the January tenth meeting of the Town of Canadega Planning Board, which is also our reorganizational meeting, which will transpire in a couple of minutes. Logan, you know everyone here, right? So this is to introduce everyone. We are fortunate to have our Secretary General Letella sign on for one more month, so John, thanks for helping us out.
Yeah.
Okay. Logan, you know where the exits are? I know the board knows where the exits are, so that's been clearly marked. I will now open the floor, the privilege of the floor. Anyone, I assume, in the virtual audience who would like to address the board regarding an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening, now's the time to do so. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to we had no legal notices required for this evening's meeting since we have no public hearings. So let's go right to our organizational meeting. The first item on the agenda is the appointment of the Vice Chairman. And I would like to nominate Bob O'Course.
I'll second that.
Second. Is there anyone else who has a nomination? If not, all in favor of Bob, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep you going in the right direction. All right, as far as Secretary, I guess we'll defer on this until until we have someone. So we will defer on the appointment of a Secretary until one is found. Appointment of the engineering firm, someone want to make a motion?
Make that motion to or MRB group to be the engineering.
Motion second, any other nominations? Suggestions? If not, all in favor of MRB group, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, as far as a legal counsel, I would like to nominate the Law Office of Christmas, Christian Madler. Uh, may I have a second please?
I'll second.
Okay. Does anyone have any further nominations? If not, all in favor of the Law Office of Christian Madler, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of personnel. Let's look first, I'll clarify that we know when our appointments were, when our terms expire. Last night Mark's, Mark was reappointed till the end of two thousand twenty seven. Congratulations Mark for your reappointment.
Holy wow, he must be crazy.
Well, he gave you a chance to spend a couple of months and you decided to stay on some good pledge you did. Scott was appointed also this year, last year, his term expires at the end of this year, twenty twenty three. My appointment was in twenty twenty and expires twenty twenty four. Amanda, we have you at the point in twenty twenty one, expiring twenty twenty five. And Bob, your appointment was twenty twenty two, last year, and expires twenty twenty six. Still have a vacancy as an olderness and if someone comes forth, we'll consider him or her. All right, that takes care of the makeup of the board. The board calendar, which was distributed. Anybody have any questions? Revisions to the board calendar? No. If not, can I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty three board?
So will. Second.
Second, for the discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay, calendar is official. All right, our rules of procedure for twenty twenty three. I assume you've looked over the twenty twenty two document and we can move it forward as is, as our new as our new rules of procedure, or if you have any corrections, additions, recommendations. Now would be the time to.
No revisions. So I could make a motion to approve as written for this year?
I'll second.
Have a motion a second. I just have one or two small things up on the meeting order business. We have, I guess we continue to have Zoom meeting protocol. Why don't we just call that meeting protocol? With that, who's keeping track of any corrections, John, are you doing that?
What page are you on?
Uh, page two or fourteen. At the bottom. We have in the last couple of years traditionally used Zoom meeting protocol. Why don't we just call meeting protocol, it's more than Zoom meeting.
There's another eight word box.
And we'd be right after overview of emergency evacuation procedures. One page, okay.
We've got privilege on the floor next, the test of publishing of legal notice.
Yep, that's how it would flow.
I went on to see if it's something.
It was number two.
Maybe it only shows up on her calendar.
It's not, it was never put in.
No, we want to add.
Edit, yeah. Our agenda, yeah, we've been showing Zoom meeting protocol and that's for shuffling papers, making sure people realize the procedure, it's there to address the board. Names and addresses and all that, so that will be that part.
Just change it to remote. Remote meeting protocol?
Meeting protocol on the rules of procedure right underneath overview of emergency evacuation procedures. So that would be on our agendas moving forward. Okay.
Is there a conflict?
Page four. Draft agendas, application information, plan, PRC, and other pertinent information for review of an application will be made available to planning board members on Tuesday prior to the meeting. Okay, unless otherwise notified, final agendas and proposed action items shall be made available to the board members on the Thursday before the meeting. Okay. Copies of meeting. Oh, then it says copies of meeting agendas and legal notices shall be available to the town development office ten days prior to the planned meeting.
That doesn't make sense.
No.
Right.
You haven't developed the agenda.
No, at that point, no, it's usually the week before.
Is the ten days a New York state?
I don't, I'd have to look into that.
All right, why don't you check that?
What? Let's start with C.
Seven A and C. Other than that. Oh, our, 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 our reports of the town board. Can we change that to maybe like September, is that our prerogative or is that a downboard, we right now it's July.
It is July.
I think we've agreed that it's sort of mid-year, that's not.
You want to do it at the end of the year?
Well, that'd be better.
I mean, ACV does it at the end.
That'd make more sense.
They do what they're doing theirs at the end of this month.
Like a recap for all the years.
Okay, if it doesn't conflict with any.
Yeah, I'll see if there's some weird.
If not, does this board agree that the December?
Well, you might want to put it like in October because by the time you guys approve whatever that is that you're sending down and then for the town board to actually receive it in the same calendar year. You're gonna want to go a little.
Okay, October, November, yeah, because December gets busy anymore. We only have one.
You only have one meeting in December.
So why don't we make it October if we can?
Yeah, and that would give you time.
So Amanda. You, you got that John, so on page eight, paragraph fourteen. The copper has a plan report would be October, if we can do it. All right, and the only other thing I have, there's been no changes to the remote attendance policy. I didn't do it last night, I mean. All right, so Amanda, you, you accept those couple of corrections to your motion?
Of course, yes, gladly.
All right, we have an amended motion and a second. All in favor of adopting the rules of procedure for twenty twenty three as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, that takes care of all the paperwork stuff, move on to our meeting. All right, first first site plan application is continued review of fiduciary associates representing Maria McNabb and Ernest Whitbeck. On his property fifty-two eighty-five Block Rock, Black Point Drive. And this has been before us for a couple of meetings, but we're continually waiting for information on the on-site system. And I think we got the steep slope issue resolved, right?
Correct.
So it's just a matter of watershed inspector telling us that you prefer that we hold up any action until the septic system is approved. So I guess we're looking at a further continuation.
Correct.
Can you elaborate on this deep slope?
They're not doing it, they're not being.
Okay, well then, that being the case, when do we want to push it off to?
The applicant did request today specifically that it was pushed.
Yeah, and I'll add, I'll add that information.
I'm gonna assume not, well, not the end of January.
Let's do February.
Fourteen.
It's like a February fourteenth, it's our first meeting, that's when we usually review renewed applications, now we give them a month to get their approval. All right, so we, someone want to give me a motion to continue discussion on this application till our February fourteenth, so will.
Second.
Okay, for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The agenda is a new hearing on Mark's engineering, representing Richard Days for appropriate twenty-four ninety-five Brickyard Road, requesting single-state site plan approval for the site to become compliant with the town code in regards to site elements that were installed with the structure without plan board approval. Including the expansion of the gravel parking area, disturbance of over a thousand square feet of in the industrial district, exterior storage, installation of parking lot, fire lanes, construction of a new access drive and the parking area in front of the property. Okay, so Logan, this sounds like you're did a lot out there and you've got to correct the sins of the past.
Correct.
Okay, what are we doing? Um.
I did get a new set today, I put up on the under, I'm not sure if this one we grabbed.
Yeah, right, we had some comments from MRB that we addressed.
So for the boards, the board's purposes, there was an amended plan that came in today, which doesn't exactly follow our protocol, but it was in response to the comments of MRB. Uh, there was no substantial change to plan, no redesigns or anything like that, no. So typically what would have happened if he hadn't submitted the plan is that the plan the plan action would have occurred.
I can't see it, it's so hard.
The plan action would have occurred conditional upon MRB's comments being met. But the applicant, I guess, is saying that you've taken that step.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so since we get that plan?
Maybe it's, maybe it's hidden over here.
I mean, if you have the old plan, nothing's changed on the site plan, we added some details that were requested. Those were the major revisions.
Right now we have no one.
Oh, there it is. That's tomorrow.
Yeah, I just, I just.
Ninety-four. That's existing.
Yeah.
There we go.
So for the most part, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the site or business that's in it. We're doing sand blasting of equipment, things of that nature, so to the north there you see kind of hatched in is either kind of like, not so much storage, but like prep, like that's where they keep it before they bring it indoors to sand blast basically. Right now uh, there is no like buffer, like you can pretty much see it from the road and there's some equipment that's there with like refuse piles from, I'm not sure if it's from.
I don't know where it's from.
Yeah, same, I'm not sure where it's from, but those piles will be removed as far as this process, that that's one of the things that's kind of out of of nature of the code. Um, so what we're proposing is you'll see to the west there, dark gray. Um, that's kind of, that's already existing parking lot that's been run over. So we're trying to reestablish that paved area. So we'll increase the parking area, which will clean up the location of where the piles are. Um, we have proposed here there's a entrance and exit that will have a ramp which will facilitate handicap parking here, then there's another entrance there, which will facilitate handicap parking there that we introduced. There's an accessway, a new one-way road, not road, but drive aisle going across the Brickyard, parallel to Brickyard. Which we are proposing that will allow for parking in the front and access for employees, because right now most employees park either along here or in here kind of sporadically, so it'll be like new striping and things of that nature.
Logan, can I stop for a second?
Sure.
Are you saying it's not done yet or is it already?
It's not done yet.
So this is basically a site plan review.
It is. It's a combination of things that are.
So we, Chris, we back up, we, we received, our department received complaints from the airport just about things happening on site that were not, you know, part of any sort of plan. Um, and so when Chris went out and inspected, I went with them the second visit and, um, you know, there was just, there's a lot happening on site. So this is really just to get it into compliance with some sort of semblance of order. And once that happens, Chris's plan is to then work with them on the interior.
Right, well, we're not covering that.
And we're not doing that yet because that's, you know, and safety and egress and that kind of thing, but right now we're working on the outside to get that in mind and a little bit more presentable.
Right, because right now the staging area kind of just looks like random pieces of equipment just scattered all throughout the parking area, we kind of want to make it more deliberate as far as a staging area, we have here, we have landscape plan, which will have a buffer and a fence combination that will kind of screen a little bit more from the road, so you're not driving by and looking right at a whole bunch of random equipment outside. Um, we also have buffer as far as trees along the frontage of the road, which will help increase the, the view into the site. They are proposing like a landscape bed with a sign in the front. Uh, it's kind of advertise what the business is, because right now it's not really apparent what the business is. So what area will be paved and what area will be gravel, it's also. So this area is currently paved and this will be expanded, expanded pavement, and then this is paved over here. This will be paved as a connection between the two sides. And then we're just squaring off where there is no pavement with gravel. It'll, it's another staging area. The only green area would be the upfront.
Correct.
Green and brown.
Yeah.
Brown, yeah, I'm looking at the map. Now Sean, is this in the side of the road for the pathways?
No.
No.
Auburn Trail?
Yeah, they all. On the other.
Yeah. Can you, Kim, can you just pull it down a little as we can see the road? On this way, you're big down, just pull it. Pull it, I guess.
And to the north is heavily wooded, so it's that's like the dividing line basically.
And who owns the property to?
I'm industrial use. I'm not exactly sure who owns that.
I can tell you right now, I'm on, on core.
Does, does the Auburn Trail cross the road and go on the airport side of the road here?
That's what I was, that's what I was asking Mark, because I thought we gave easements on this side of the road up further.
We did.
Yeah, up further.
Up further.
Yeah.
Yeah, in front of the townhouses, I know it's on this side of the road, that's why I was asking.
So how is far as, uh, coverage covered, you know, part of the I guess from the stormwater statement.
It's, it's an additional, yeah, the additional previous that they added is less than what the town regulates. I mean, their MS four and under their site design criteria.
The whole lot is. Building coverage, uh, existing buildings.
So if you take away the shaded grain, which is essentially already there. We're only editing the hashed area, which is the gravel. It's under the, under disturbance thresholds, it's under the previous parking lot increase that we we require under, I'm not saying that drainage couldn't be a consideration by the plan board, it's just it's not a requirement for the town, for the works. Yeah, and we are tying into existing storm drains that drain to the south, which is the existing ponds there.
Yep. I, I realize industrials for giving this force controls. Want to go down, Kim, to the landscape plan? Okay, so I assume some point, somewhere on the plan you have a tree schedule, those planning schedules.
Oh, yeah.
As to what, um, I think I saw that.
You did, it's right there, it's right here. You can't see it, yeah.
There. So you're gonna have some trees out front.
Yeah, I'll need it.
In front of the, in front of the building. Tree entrance, you said along the.
Yeah, so those are dense upright evergreens, so I mean, there'll be a screen all all year long. Shift it back down so we can see the road.
And then the trees to the, to the south, just the trees.
Those are another evergreen different, there's, those are larger, more like spruces. Those are spruces or firs, and then.
I think your deciduous trees met the standards as far as the caliber.
Right, correct. Um, there is, we are also proposing a concrete pad here that will house a generator that has also been screened with evergreens that are that same as this, so. Those are six foot. Yeah, I think those, those are six foot. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, initially six foot minimum. They will grow taller.
So you've got a tree line to the north. And is that a tree line to the south off the front?
There is a hedgerow.
Hedgerow?
Yep. So we're just increasing the density of the hedgerow closer to the road.
Yep, up front, yeah. So what Lance, Chris was talking about this morning?
So I think.
Something about the one, the one, the.
Well, Logan.
Storage yards.
Yeah, Logan, can you just identify the outside storage areas that are being proposed or are currently being used as outside storage areas? Currently it's all here. Okay.
And that's all, all where you see everything.
You see everything, it's basically refuse piles here and then storage. And they're going, as part of this improvement, they're moving all the storage from the front to the rear or what is? Yeah, they're, they're trying to clean up the front. Be more presentable and then keeping everything tidied up in this location. I'm, I'm with, I'm hard surface areas. Correct. And then potentially screened by what's being proposed now. Right, then I, we would move this this way, but there's my gases right here, so that's where we determined it to planting bed. I mean, we could extend the fence, but that's another kind of hurdle we have to go through is coordinating with whoever has that easement. So we were trying to stop it right at that edge, just so we're not competing on the easement.
So there'll be no storage piles in front of that.
No, that'll, that'll be designated part.
On the other side.
They do have storage here. Um, it's mainly new metal to help repair what they're rehabbing here, so it's like intake and then equipment that they're restoring.
All right, board members, any further questions? Well, I guess, just for my clarification, these aren't new owners to this property. So none of this probably would have happened if there hadn't been a complaint.
Sean, is that what you said? How did this all transpire, all of a sudden now we're seeing this?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, he's a fairly new owner. Uh, I don't know when, but it was a printing press way back in the day, but yeah, the, the impetus was the complete.
Any questions? Anyone from the audience like to address the board on this? Any questions? Anyone from the audience like to address the board on this issue? Okay, um. With trees next to tree, you're putting shrubs next to the tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. And I'm what they be approaching into the, so, okay. All right, let's uh move on. This is an unlisted action under seeker. Uh, so I do, I take the motion just for the seeker initially.
And with the edit, then I have to revise the date or reflect the release.
You're ahead of me, okay.
Wow.
Somebody want to give me seeker? I'll make a motion to approve seeker determination non-significant resolution uh for Mark's engineering representing Richard Days at twenty-four ninety-five Brickyard, your, Perk Yard Road, CPN two-two dash zero nine four.
One second.
Okay, motion is second regarding seeker. Hold a favor.
Hi.
Aye.
Before we move to the site, we can discuss lighting.
With the lighting. We do have a lighting plan, okay, with uh point plot and um full cutoff.
Right, nothing's transpiring, nothing's.
Are these new lights or existing lights?
Uh, there are existing lights that he's replacing, but uh he is proposing lights in the front. Um, but you'll see from the point plot that there's no, the foot candles don't go over.
Okay. Uh, we did not, we get no reply on, maybe we didn't, not required, okay, accounting playing board. No comments from Chris Jensen, other, yes, this morning. And there was the MRV review from January third. Okay, uh, I guess we're ready to move on to the site plan approval. Someone want to give the motion on that?
I'll make a motion um for the site plan approval for twenty-two dash zero nine four with the five conditions.
Let's make it six.
Okay. Six conditions.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Motion second. So where is public, whether it's public or? Good, hold a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Please. Isaiah. Hey, thank you. Alrighty. Uh, moving on to CPN twenty-two one oh four, Vanity Associates, representing Gregory and Denise Kalback. Owners of property thirty-six, thirty-seven Lake Breeze Way, requesting a single-stage site plan approval. It's really a revision, I think, for the first floor elevation adjustment of the, the adjustment is sixteen inches above the approved site plan. So it's four inches over the allowable. Uh, sixteen inches total from the, from the declared first floor adjustment. So uh, Rocco, or are you here on behalf of the Kalbaks? Rocco, are you?
Okay.
We're ready to hear you. We hear you now. What happened there?
Well, this is one of those where, you know, we were just getting adjusted to, early on, we had some trouble with Gerber's Masons. We would put a stake out there and if the stake got disturbed, they wouldn't call us to reset it. So I think that's what happened in this case. At during construction, the stake got moved around a little bit and sometimes we put a mark on a laugh and we leave a hub and it's a, you know, and, and it, it just somehow it just happened and, and we got to be uh sixteen inches, we got twelve inches to play with, so we were four inches above that. All the other parameters, the grading and stuff did change. Cause it's only, it was only a four inch difference, so. We've since worked out a plan with Gerber because we had a few of these come to you. Then if you'll notice, the last eight or ten, we haven't had a couple for you, so. Uh, we work something out where we, we do a final check before they pour any concrete, so that's worked out real well.
Good. Well, uh, mistakes happen, uh, stakes get knocked over and that happens, so. Uh, I went out and looked at it, it, it doesn't seem to be uh any, any concern as far as, I mean, as far as meeting the uphill grade, it's, it's spot on. Uh, it's almost, almost just a couple inches lower than the, the slab above you. Below, uh, there's concern maybe about being a little higher, that you've got that slope going down through the back of the existing homes on the West Ridge, but uh you have a swell there and.
It all gets, it all gets picked up that goes into that catch basin, so.
Yep.
Uh, there, there's no issue of, you know, runoff, so.
No, it looks good up there. I, I appreciate the effort taken to protect those trees.
Yeah.
On that uh lower side, so.
Yep.
I guess in situations such as this board, we just think sure there's no effect on the adjacent neighbor, neighbors as far as a result of the the adjustment, uh, and that Lance has no issues.
No, I, I looked at, I went to the site, I also looked, I don't see any issues with the, the additional elevation changes.
Okay, any board members have any issues, concerns? Not, uh, let's see, we doing just a.
Yeah, so the thought was you just do it with a board motion as opposed to putting in a resolution with no conditions essentially attached to it. That's okay with the board.
Sure. So I need a motion from a board member uh to the fact that the, we can do the adjustment. I'll make that motion to approve the four inch above the approved site plan at sixteen over actually uh for CPN two-two one oh four. Okay. Second. Just make sure it's sixteen inches over the plan.
Yeah.
But it's four inches over the allowable. Okay. Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, for discussion, if not, a little favor.
Aye.
Aye. Post.
We thank you.
Okay, don't do it again.
Well, we won't have a good evening, but I can't say that, but.
Alright, thanks, Rocco.
Remember, it's not just one guy, it's two or three or four, you know?
You're the messenger, right? Okay, let's move on to uh, we have on our agenda a sit-down review from uh Canada Division Solar LLC. Uh, why don't you, Sean, tell us what's happening and why it's happening?
Um, excuse me. Me um first say that the town has been working on solar revisions, thank you Bob, for, I'm gonna say six months now, at least, right, since the summer? Yeah, at least. Uh, they are in a great shape and are, will be before the board for, uh, with a public hearing at the end of January. In the interim, we uh propose a moratorium on all solar applications, construction, et cetera. Which the public hearing would also be on the thirtieth of of this month, just to make sure it gives us enough time to get our red light changes through. The, so this sketch plan, uh twenty-two oh ninety-seven is the same sketch plan that you saw leaving, was it August?
Yeah.
And um same for Deprima, uh, is this Supreme? Oh, same for um Stockwell, same uh exact layout. The only difference that um we know is they're proposing a grazing plan in lieu of basically I, uh, and as a way to farm the uh property. They want the blessing of this board, obviously, as well as the ag board. So ultimately, the ag board would have to give their blessing for this board to move forward with anything. So it's kind of in a very, it's in a weird, kind of this weird limbo um where they, they, I think they were under the impression that this board would send it to ag. Um, but in reality, PRCs were to send this to the ag committee for their opinion first. Uh, and then it can come back. Um, again, this is all sketch, so.
And it's in patent bro.
It's, we haven't done analysis on it yet because of all of the, I believe, all of the implications, the NRI implications are expensive.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, I think in August, we told them that uh your first thought was for the ag, you've got to get the, the blessing of the ag.
Blessing of the ag.
Because we, we did not even consider anything that's, if they consider prime soils.
Right.
And uh, so you just talked to us until you made peace with them. And I know they were at the C of once and maybe twice.
I think they've been twice. The second time they had someone from the grazing association come in and present on, Kim was, Kim is on the ag committee, uh, so.
So I.
They did not embrace, they've had consequent uh discussions, they, i.e. the ag board, and they have not embraced the grazing as a form of agricultural production, et cetera.
Then reading their minutes, they don't feel.
So, um.
Except for alternate. Okay, so.
Yeah, so we saw him, we saw a chat from Distributed Sun this morning, talked to him and then he told us to pull it. There's no really no point.
Yeah, they probably ought to run both of them.
Yeah.
File the ag board and then they want to come back and talk to us about sketch and knowing full well that the solar law is probably going to be changed. They shouldn't file anything until that's, so. All right, so fluffy Jennifer this evening, at the request of the applicant. And any further questions on that? Alrighty, can I get an approval for minutes that we did last year, December thirteenth?
I know that we approved the December thirteen, twenty twenty two meeting minutes.
Okay.
Aye.
Uh, hold a favor.
Aye.
Thank you, John. All right, sureties, letters of credit. Hold your horse.
Yeah.
Boy, did we get a lot of requests. It's cleanup time. End of the year, we, we clean, we clean out the, I guess, clean out the, the coffers.
We like to give money.
Any old che, old checks that expired, we uh. So I guess that's what we're doing this evening with these uh surety releases. And you have a resolution in front of you that covers all of them.
It can just, budge one again, let's see how it goes.
You, you want to explain, anybody want to explain anymore why?
I guess it's how they. I think ultimately, a lot of them have already issued the CFO and have been closed. The town continues to track on a surety tracking list. And so such then that they get an official release request, I guess, to some degree, whether that's from the applicant and or from staff. Um, so the tracking list just keeps going forever and ever, and that's half of the cleanup that we're trying to accomplish. Yeah, I believe during Chris's investigation, prior to issues of the CFO, he verifies in case, most of these are erosion and sediment control sureties, which covers during the construction part. And then once the site is stabilized, he's then authorizing the rele, the release of the, the dollar amount or in, in issuance of the CFO. Sometimes the applicant does not make the request, mostly probably because the dollar amount isn't so large, I guess, um, and maybe they forget about it, um, which is a possibility. But that's why they're going on for five years in some cases.
They're only money, so.
I want to say like ninety-five percent of the time they forget about it, yeah.
I think a lot of times they forget about it.
So these are, these are projects that the, the applicant failed to ask for the release.
In most cases, yes.
And it was Gene who brought it to our attention, you, you've got these things open and.
Yeah, so we, the process was, you know, they're tracked on the spreadsheet. We sat down and went through every project, uh, noting that, yep, that is closed out. Uh, it's been closed out. We still have this money sitting here and then Chris reached out to all of the, those uh individuals and they were, they were ready to go, ready to be released. He said, yeah, I'll take some money, that sounds true, thanks. Merry Christmas.
Uh, Mark, I know you, you have some concerns sometimes in the process of reviewing sureties by this board. Uh, are you comfortable uh with what you have in front of you and the reasoning for it?
So just some general comments on it. I did do a drive-by on all twenty-one of these.
Oh, wow.
And, and I would have pulled the uh documentation to try to better understand, educate myself if nothing else. But I would have required a foil to uh access all twenty-one of these in order to get to them because these plans are no longer anywhere that are applicable to us. This to me is a check and balances scenario, so for, for some reason, we're, the planning board is a part of the process where we're supposed to validate in some way, shape or form that these dollars are due back. And I, I guess the, the short answer Chuck is I don't like it, but council also, town council also responded to me and said basically um, we're entitled, entitled to rely on staff to give us those reports, which this is not a staff question of trust for me. It's, it's part of the process piece of, I don't know what I'm approving in most of the cases, other than the simple request for return of money. So uh, that's where it's moderately annoying to me, I guess, because I, in driving around, there are three locations that it's one, it's, the, the good thing is it's nearly impossible to tell what was supposed to be done. So you can tell that there's new builds and things that happen, but it's nearly impossible to tell what's supposed to be done because they did what they were supposed to do. But there were three, three locations that still had activity on the property that would have led me to believe that something was still going on. So either large piles of material that hadn't been done, hadn't been handled yet, or still silt fences in place. I don't know if that's from an old project or a new project. So in general, if the expectation is that we're approving that the work was complete, I don't love the idea of signing these. If it's just an authorization of approval to release the funds because town employees state that the work is done, that's different for me. And uh, then, then it's a check and balance of making sure. I, I guess I don't know who then validates that the work was done at some point, if that's what was intended. But if it's just validating that the town employee has stated that this work was done and that's our, our backup documentation, then I can move forward with it.
I guess the only thing is, just because there's work being done still at the site, most of these, as, as was said, involve soil erosion control. Uh, so that means grasses would stabilize, floor, it was a landscape surety to ensure that uh trees, bushes were planted in accordance with the, and it survived in accordance with the approved plan. Or at the extreme case, it might be a public room of its large project, such as Pierce Brook, that involves uh streets, storm sewers, those kind of things. And certainly, uh, we're, we're not obligated to go out and make inspections, as I've said before, but we rely on staff and MRV to do those inspections. And I think the only reason we're in the loop is because we, we established or required the escrow be established at the time the plans were approved. So because we required it, we have to be part of the release, so I assume that's what happens.
And a lot, a lot, I think we've discussed this before, but a lot of these, what I'm calling the smaller ones, these sureties, the intent is to protect the town for the what-if that occurs during the construction process. So site person does not establish ground cover, there's an erosion issue, the stream gets um sediment discharge into the stream, there's some dollar amount here that the town could, in theory, use to help resolve that potential site issue. That money sits for the construction process, Chris Jensen, co-officer officer. That money sits for the construction process, Chris Jensen, code enforcement officer, issues a, a CFO. Project then has the right to withdraw that dollar amount, because in theory, construction is ended. Almost in all of these instances, instances, MRB group is not involved in the inspection. Um, other, it's probably solely on town staff, code enforcement officers doing those inspections and certifications. And the large projects, the ones that have a dollar amount that is fairly substantial, that require MRB group to review. And approve a dollar amount and go through the process.
Like Pierce Brook.
Pierce Brook, like Fox Ridge. Those do require MRB group inspection along the way, because we're observing the water me. Being installed that they're now requesting drawdown on. It requires Jim Fletcher to verify that the roadwork. And the site work that's being done under his supervision has in fact been done to his approval before it comes to you. And also Chris for the site, uh, ongoing stuff that's going on. That's why those usually come to you in a different format with a, a breakdown and then sign-ups from all staff. During construction activity. These are always at the very end of construction, after everything has been established and, and, and complete by town staff's, yes, approval. Don't know that that changes any of the questions that were asked or anything that was done, but I just wanted to somewhat try to describe the difference between the two.
Yeah, and again, as long, as long as what we're approving is that we're stating that. Town employee hasn't verified the work. Then we can release the funds because of that, and I'm okay with that.
I think, at least from my perspective, that is what is being done on these, on these smaller.
And I have in my, my hands, the, uh, all the releases that have been signed by Chris Jensen, Jim Fletcher. And I, I looked for their signatures before I signed it. And, uh, then the final signature is, uh, is Gene. Then why he should release. Okay, so, well. For the discussion, I mean, anyone, any board member, if we, if you see a release on the agenda and you wanna. More details on it, I'm sure Shawna can share it with you, uh, I mean, we are taking an action. Uh, and you don't want to take it as a frivolous action, but in the same regard, I think we rely on our staff to make sure the inspections are done.
But I think there's only one thing that I would ask that we do, Chuck, because we don't, last time we, last meeting, we physically handed them around. There's a statement in the resolution that says, whereas the planning board is satisfied with the details described in the requested releases. And associated documents referenced herein. Either that.
So the backup.
So you want the backup?
Yeah, what, what would be the suggested change? I'm fine with changing it to whatever you guys feel is most appropriate.
Either we get the backup to say, yes, we agree with it, uh, or we state something that whereas the. The chairman of the planning board is satisfied with. I mean, whoever's seen that document, I'm approving a document that I've never seen. That, that's what I don't like about it.
Okay, well, I think we can certainly, as far as our procedure, I, we have at every meeting when there's a release involved, it's here.
Right, we can easily scan it and just.
No, I'm just saying, make it available to, if someone wants to look at it before the meeting or during the meeting, it's.
Sometimes we get requests in a format of an email from the applicant to the town saying, hey. My project's closed, I want to release some money. Sometimes it comes in an email from Chris Jensen. To town staff saying, hey, I've issued a CFO, I want to release this, here's the, the release. So I think if that stuff could be made available, like the other applications, sorry, to the planning board. The request and the supporting release form.
Supporting documentation, yeah, that you.
Mark, would that, would that answer that question for you?
I think so. I mean, again, I don't, and with the exception of the last meeting, I don't think I'd seen one of these. So it's related the way the paperwork reads, because it says that, um, we have, we're, we're. Satisfied with the details described in the request and the associated documents. And then in the last statement, the planning board is directing the chairperson to sign them. So, I mean. Do you understand the conflict? In one place, we're hearing that we're signed already. Seen them, we signed off on them, make, I'm not questioning, I'm just questioning the process.
That's the past stands record. We sign, doesn't sign the resolution, we're approved the resolution, that's why. Yeah. Okay, well. Every time we have a release, they, they're here for the meeting for anybody to look at, so. Through the fund, you know, the board member, if they're interested in looking at a particular release, uh, it's here. Uh, alright, let's move on with this one. Uh, so we've got this gaggle of releases to. Consider, uh, someone want to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the release of, of many. Twenty-one on the list.
Okay, motion second.
Second.
Motion second, all favor?
Aye.
For this new software. Trade track sureties too, or? Doesn't go there.
No, I, I can, I will look into that.
I mean, there should, there should be some sort of tracking.
Yeah, please list me as abstaining on that motion, so that I don't, I haven't seen any of these releases, so.
Okay.
Did you take a overall?
No, we haven't, yeah.
You haven't?
No. I'm sorry, Mark, you were.
Same.
You would like keep.
Please abstain?
Yeah, I, I.
We haven't seen a vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Mark, you abstain.
Mark abstained, so it's, uh, but the work is, we're in favor, one abstained. Yeah, I was just saying, but, you know, having a system that tracks.
So right now, Gene does that, but I don't, I, it's all done in Excel spreadsheet, so.
Yeah.
There's a way along in, in the actual program, I'm sure that would be.
Yeah, she would not let go of that.
Oh, she will not.
She is one of the sheep.
Alrighty, uh, anybody else? Well, the LLC board, number one for Fox Ridge is.
It's on hold right now. We're waiting for the revised letter of credit to be submitted to the town and then I believe there'll be an email from the MRB group to town staff.
Okay, no referrals to town board, no recommendations for ZDA. Special projects, uh, I don't think anybody has anything to report, all I can say is that the. Uh, sidewalk. Sidewalk committee, for lack of a better word, is, is off and running. And I think I reported that, that at the last meeting. Uh, the town had also applied for a transportation grant. Uh, that Sarah had for me, that's a bit too good, suppose I'm kidding.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, uh, she said, I guess, the county, uh, Genesee, valid, Genesee.
The General, like, how's that?
They, they had some issues with our application, so. So she will back and change it. So that was, that was the grant that was hopefully going to be used to do a, some sort of highway management plan. Uh, so that's on hold, but the sidewalk, uh, effort is off and running, and I think they're trying to get it done by spring.
Spring, uh, yeah, they, they want to do some public, uh, outreach at, uh, two events, one of the musicals, I think, at the high school in March. And then an event here at the transportation we talked about in March as well.
And they're gonna have that crowdsourcing.
Crowdsourcing that, I think our next, well. We're looking at the next meeting, our team, the, the.
Okay, anybody else have anything to report? Okay, the solar law is, uh, chugging along.
Yep.
And, uh. If we also have anything else as far as other business related, board of business. Training, we're in a new year, so. The good news is Mark and Scott's. Four hours.
Only four hours now, but carryover.
And carryover.
Yeah.
Yes, Scott, you had expressed interest in the, uh, Federation meeting, uh, at Sardegas Springs, I think. So. Deadline.
That's a two-day training. Three.
Uh, soon, yeah, yeah.
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
It's in the spring, right?
April.
Okay, so keep an eye out, uh, there's a lot of good, uh, Zoom training sessions. They certainly are convenient. Okay, next meeting is in two weeks, the twenty-fourth. Uh, you have listed there the projects currently on the agenda. There's no big surprises. So we'll, uh, take them as they come. Oh, I tried to keep them under an hour, I think you just will.
Just.
I had to talk to seven. My turn.
We ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Alright, then I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven today. Second.
All favor? Thank you, folks. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark, see you guys soon.